So at this time, I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. For all those who can't, please stand and join me in my congratulations.
President, ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So obviously, we have a full house here tonight, but some ground rules. Can we please keep this professional? Look, when we allow people to come to public comment and don't interrupt, yes, we just don't interrupt us, let people finish what they're saying. And just let's keep it orderly and professional. We'll do our best to answer all your questions. We're gonna start out, obviously, there was a meeting a week ago tonight. We presented the plan on the six hundred Perry Highway project. So there was a list of questions that came in from the public. I'm gonna go through each of those questions and answer them to the best of our ability. Again, let me read through them, let me answer them. If you have a question, then we'll go through them. So the first question that came in was if the payment of the IM is coming from the two hundred fifty thousand dollar park fund, should that be replaced and what is the plan to replace it? The answer to that is we will replace that two hundred fifty thousand dollars after being used with future development and replenish the park fund. The second question that came in, which is a good question, will the DEP inspect the new property prior to the purchase? The DEP has already been on site and inspected the property. Part of the contingency agreement that we have laid out is we are going to do what is called a phase one survey. So we'll bring in an outside firm to do a phase one on that property. The county has also agreed and offered to support if there's any remediation. So there's phase one, which is investigation. Phase two, if they need to do further investigation, they will. Phase three is what's called remediation. Should there be anything on the property that's an environmental concern that needs to be remediated, it will be, and the county has agreed to assist with that.
Can you just get that so we can hear you guys?
Sure, ma'am, sorry. Can we look at other property options? The cost is under budget with no plans for additional funding, grants are not given. Look, we have the property, obviously, Forest Springs Park. Acquiring this property is really just the first phase. We are moving forward with additional phases until we secure the funding for this project. The property is an ideal parcel located on nineteen. It expands the footprint of the existing park. It's on Route nineteen. The existing structures, we believe, can be accommodating to what our needs are for the future as the township grows. Here was a question that said, "I'm unable to attend the meeting next week due to vacation. Please post the questions and answers." This is our future, this is our community center, please care about the township. That's why we're answering it tonight, and we are gonna put these questions with the answers online. Here was a question that came up, "Who is included in the executive committee?" There's really no executive committee. There's a Board of Supervisors, there's a Township Manager, a Township Solicitor. Occasionally, we do have what is called executive sessions, right? These are sessions that we hold to discuss legal issues and personnel matters. In the property act. Why would the executive committee include non-residents and employees who are not residents? Again, I've laid out who the executive session is, we are residents. And with the exception there, who is the township supervisor? So it says, "Middle Lancaster has elected officials who are responsible to the residents. Who did the employees answer to?" The answer to that is the township employees report to the Township Manager. Who do we report to? We report to the public. Prior to any property purchase, the property should be inspected for integrity, structural design, soil, et cetera. Already said, we're gonna do a phase one study. We're also gonna bring in a builder to inspect the existing buildings to make sure there's no surprises. In other words, we're doing our due diligence to make sure the buildings meet our criteria. What is being sacrificed to buy this property? The current administration building will likely be rented out continually. The community center will likely be used for historical space. The rented space will no longer be used, meaning the police department, and then we have the Historical Society built around Route nineteen. All total, that's just shy of two thousand dollars a month is what we pay for rentals. Why do officials threaten that three hundred fifty thousand dollar, three hundred fifty townhomes will be built in the township if we do not purchase this property? It's not what, it wasn't a threat, that's a reality. Prime property, a builder could come in, tear all those buildings down, and put a problem. That's just a realistic option. Do the officials, assuming that means the Board of Supervisors, not get to choose how many townhomes, how much can be built? Look, if a developer comes in, wants to buy a piece of property and wants to develop it, we can't stop them if they're meeting code orgs, right? Correct. Nothing we can do. Here's another question. Additionally, what would a developer need to do to build the townhomes? Tear down the buildings, do phase one, do their due diligence, determine how many, you know, units they could put into, all right, Tom? As simple as that. What about the mineral rights for the property? Do they have gas leases, et cetera? So those are still in negotiation with us right now. We don't know the answer to that, but that's part of the contingency. It says, "What efforts are being done to hold down costs?" Look, obviously, we need a new facility. Look at the meeting tonight, we have people standing, people out the door. The township is growing. We need to expand our facilities. There's concerns here with this existing building with septic. There's concerns with this existing building with water supply, and we need to upgrade. This place has been here for, I don't know how long, but the township is growing. Look, even when we vote, especially during a presidential election, there's traffic flow problems, there's problems with people getting in and out here to vote. And I've heard people even say they avoid coming here to vote, which we don't want. What is the tax implementation going to be to senior citizens and retired people on retired income? Quite honestly, I'll explain it further, what's the impact on everybody? According to our financial studies, the impact on taxes is going to be zero. What happens to the current municipal? Harvey?
Is it zero, what you said?
Zero. What happens to the current municipal building and land? Our initial, we have several options. The current plan is to keep it, likely run out of facilities, and hold the public works and administration building. Here was a question about the last meeting Monday night. What Nimrod thought the three-part audience format was a good idea. So look, if you wanna call somebody Nimrod, it was my idea. I thought it'd be better to break into smaller groups so we could have discussions, right? Obviously, that didn't work. We quickly adjust, we move people outside. I apologize, it wasn't the best format. But look, this is exactly why we need a bigger building. There's a question on here, "Why don't we have microphones?" Well, the acoustics in here are horrible. You couldn't even get logged into the TV today to put the agenda. What, please, please. The room arrangement, again, relating to breaking up into three groups, was this the version? It was really meant to be to have smaller groups so we could go through individual presentations and answer your questions, so people could hear. Again, apologize, the format wasn't the best. Again, if you wanna blame somebody, blame you. Here's a question, "What is the average attendance at a regular municipal meeting?" It's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to forty people. Obviously, we probably have double that tonight. How is the current room used throughout the month? Assuming that means this community center. It's rented out for parties on weekends and is used to hold other township meetings, so the hearing board, planning commission, et cetera. If you build a new building facility, municipal facility, how would you justify it? So obviously, these current facilities aren't large enough to accommodate all the people that we have, particularly with our growing township. We're looking forward, not just today, but out five, ten, fifteen years. What's the township gonna look like? We're gonna experience growth, and this facility just isn't conducive to all the people that we believe are going to be moving into this area. There's been studies said that the township was gonna increase by roughly seven hundred and fifty people, and I can't remember the timeframe, but we've already tripled that by twenty thirty. That's already gonna happen probably in the next three years. A large meeting, a large meeting room would accommodate a large crowd that we had tonight. Yeah, exactly. That's part of the plan on why we need to get another facility with bigger, more conducive, a system that has a microphone, so people can hear and understand what we're saying. Your decision not to have microphones available made it difficult to understand all that spoken. We understand that, that's exactly what I've said a couple times tonight. We need a more conducive facility for larger groups so we can have a PA system. Can we please meet in a place or space where we can get together and all be heard? I think I've touched on that one numerous times. Why not meet at another township perhaps with microphones? We maybe could've done that, but again, that's why we need to expand to bigger facilities. Please save Bouter Park, the ball field, and the grounds around it. We can keep the property without raising taxes. The larger concern is the maintenance of these facilities. And we've laid out a couple options on what we could do. What do these buildings represent? And I'm not sure exactly what this question is, but the buildings currently are the community center, the park, the ball field, and the administration building. How are the costs of rehabbing the existing buildings at six hundred Perry Highway? Are they high or are they low? Why can't we build a new facility? So we've looked at those options. In the presentation last Monday, we laid out the option for a new building at Forest Springs Park. We've given our estimates based upon professional input on what it will be to revise or to remodel the facilities on six hundred highway, and there's a big delta between that with the large costs. So that was a list of questions. We also had one resident submit a letter, and I'll go through it. First question from this resident was, "Why not get a second appraisal?" So as we go through the agenda tonight, you'll see there's three criteria to this purchase. Number one, we are going to get a second appraisal. Number two, we're gonna do the phase one environmental study. And number three, we're gonna bring in a builder to evaluate the current condition of all those buildings over there to make sure they're structured and sound. Second question from this individual, "Can we have a contractor look at those facilities?" I believe I've already answered that. Has the township supervisors asked the DEP to look at the site? Again, DEP has already been there, but we're going above and beyond. Not really above and beyond, we're doing our due diligence by having somebody come in, professional organization, and do a phase one study. Fourth question, "Will we be using well water or we have to pay for city water?" I believe that facility has a tap to city water, there's actually two. We don't have sewer, there's no sewer over there, there's septic systems, but we would have public water over there, which we do not currently have. The next question, "Will the septic system be tested?" So we've already brought in our. SEO. He's looked at that septic system, so he has tested. He's given us estimates on what it would be to upgrade it. We factored that in, it was roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars worst case scenario. Will this testing be part of the agreement of the sale contingency? The answer is yes, we've had it inspected, and that will also be covered in the phase one. It said, "Where will the additional four thousand dollars a month come from the budget?" We have a surplus of money now. We would budget it for twenty twenty-six. Additionally, we have two thousand dollars roughly in rentals that we could eliminate, so that cuts it really from four thousand to say roughly two thousand dollars a month. Another question that came up is, "How is the road crew expected to do the work that they have to do and assist with the move of facilities here over there?" Ed, he could put you on the spot.
Yeah. The first time girl that we hired, Nancy Case, she's not a fire certified, so there's some time for she to be kinda pulled away from mowing the grass or some other things around here, and she can apply for the guys. That puts a package of three person crew. So one person could go do something, a certain strip hop. And one of the things that we said we would take on is building the bins over there for the aggregate and stuff. One of the other road crew members and myself are very good with concrete. We wanna pour all our own concrete inside the building and outside the building. You can do that in between snowflakes and everything else.
This is really a statement, it said, "The presentation that covered the buildings and the upgrades was well done, and has left us with an open understanding of the possibilities of moving to six hundred Perry Highway. However, the presentation on the finances and estimates and how this was going to be paid for was dead. Again, we have estimates at this time. This would be done in phases. Phase one would be purchasing the property, and then we would do renovations to the building and stages. Here's another question. We hope if you do move forward with this, that you do the basic building construction and not feel to go to expensive amenities such as stone, brick, facade, et cetera. What we have done and laid out in our proposal is, it's not the Taj Mahal. We're gonna take the existing buildings and do the minimum, if you will, to upgrade those facilities. I think that's all the questions that we have. So at this time, we'll open it up, for those who have signed in to talk, please step to the podium, state your name, your address. Again, this is for taxpayers and residents only. And please try to limit your comments to five minutes, thank you. So first up, we have Steve Friskowski.
Steve Friskowski, one oh five, Mary C. Corro. I don't love the other meetings. I've always said that if the computer is updated, we still show the other law firm we have here. It's on a page. Can you speak up? We've switched lawyers a year ago, okay, we've got two law firms, but we still show our little one, okay, which is bench law firm, okay? Ms. Wiley, this is your first meeting, right? Could you give us a little bio? Married, have great kids, have kids?
I am, I was separated twenty-four years. Didn't want to rush in anything. I have. I have four kids. They're all married, I have eight grandkids. I am from this area, I've lived here basically my whole life. My grandfather was a Palmer that lives on, that lived on Lyftster or on Pleasant Hill Road. And my parents, my maiden name is Effiger, so my family is well-known in Zillenoole. And I live at Arden Wood, and I love living there, so I am happy that we have an area we can come to that have a huge store from rural area.
We still can't hear you.
What do you wanna know?
What's your state?
Please. She's from the area, lives in Arden Woods, four kids, grandkids, lives in Arden, likes the rural, part of the Effiger family originally, so she has ties to this area originally.
Have you read the Sunshine Act?
I have.
Okay, good. Have you read the Township Supervisor's handbook?
I am working on it.
At this time, I'd like to say that there's a law on the books that says Pennsylvania, there are restrictions on selling or changing use of property acquired with grants or parks of recreation. General restrictions, property required for development with a grant fund for recreation and conservation in Pennsylvania cannot be disposed of or converted to another purpose without approval from the granting agents of D.C. and R. Properties developed with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, grant funding must remain for the public recreation and conservative uses. Violations may require repayment of the grant or replacement of the property. Donated or dedicated property, D.P.A.s, properties donated or dedicated for public use like parks are held in trust for the original person's purpose unless that use is no longer practical. Converting or selling such property requires court approval and a residential challenge, the residence can challenge the action. If conversion is allowed and disvalued, must replace the land or use the sale proceeds for the same purpose. Public trust and constitutional protection, the public trust doctrine, and the Pennsylvania Constitution protects publicly owned land and natural resources, limiting their sale or exploitation and preventing reduction of public natural sources. So you can't sell the property for the parks that. And the deed states that, it's on the deed. I don't know if you have a copy of that.
We do.
You do?
I have with me, but we do in the August.
Do you need a copy?
Sure.
Down at one, the deed states the land was acquired with grant and aid assistance under the Pennsylvania Recreational Improvement Rehabilitation Act of nineteen eighty-four. So, and now the property goes for the grant money that we have over the park too, because that is designated for the park, you can't use it for anything else. You know, we're gonna spend a million dollars on the new building, uh, buy the property over there. Why don't we spend a million dollars on a new building over there? Not a seven million dollar Taj Mahal. I mean, if you look at the pictures, they had a fireplace. That was just why, why do we need a fireplace in the township?
That was the original drawing, we redid one about a year ago. We scattered down some different.
You know, a practical steel building with a brick or sod or cement and sod is what all the other townships have around it. And it works. We don't need a two-story building, we need a hundred, a hundred twenty-four building, like thirty or fifty. Put the place on one side, but the, excuse me, the office on the other side, they didn't necessarily have a meeting room there. I keep the road for the regular, and won't cost the same anymore. You're gonna spend that much just on the property you have, right? Probably in two years. One other question. Have you been sworn in? In states, book of office. Before performing the duties of the office, each township supervisor must take the oath of office and file with the township secretary. The oath may be administered by the judge, district manager, face, or known representative. Must be contained in the standard language established by Act seventy-six of two thousand and eighteen. It's a serious violation right now, but who knows?
We're gonna have order in this meeting. Let's be respectful of one another. We're clapping and cheering, not exactly.
All right, we understand, thank you. Next up, we have Dave Carlson.
I'm Dave Carlson, I live at one seven four Strit, I've been in the township for twelve years. I'm just here to express my support for the plan that you guys had laid out last week. Some of the takeaways from the information meeting last week. People don't like change, and they don't like taxes. And I think that's some of the biggest things that concern me. I think the plan you laid out is the most economical plan that I've heard of. The other options cost more. If we delay that, it's gonna cost more, there's more constraints, there's probably more competition for grant money as time goes on. So I think the time is right. Full disclosure, I am the chairman of the planning commission, and one of the charges that we have, I'm not here representing the planning commission, but one of the charges we have is to rewrite the ordinances for land development and planning of residential communities in anticipation of the growth that we forecast. The growth forecast came from the comprehensive plan. A lot of people in this room wrote the comprehensive plan, they were part of the team that put that together. We look at the surrounding townships, we know the growth is coming. And when they can find property, this area, I think, is attractive to a lot of people with the potential now for remote work and tunnel work and all that. We've got a lot more people from the city, from suburbs, and wanting to come out and get away with all that. So this area is prized, and we have to anticipate it. It takes so long to build anything, to do anything, to develop it, you know. Civil works projects can take ten years. So we know that even if you bought that today, it's not gonna be in place for three years, five years possibly, if the funding is a little slower than anticipated. But if we wait five years, we're way behind the curve. So I think we have to take some kind of action. I think the process, the project that you laid out is the most economical option that we found. It works for the township, it works for the maintenance guys, it works for the community, I think it's a good plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, John Mark Bradley.
I'm John Mark Bradley, I'll have to put.
Okay, take care. Next up, Debbie Scott.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
If you can't hear me, let me know. My name is Debbie Scott and my address is one oh three Locust Alley. Since the special meeting, I, I have notes, so I'm gonna read them so I don't miss it. Okay? So since the special meeting last Monday, and the option one of selling the municipal building and property, I have many, I've had many people inquiring and asking me questions and wanting information concerning Bowser Park and the ball field. So, and one of the public lips of information that I have, there's so much more available, but I only have a few minutes, of course. I'm a lifelong Lancaster Township resident. And in two thousand, I began my journey as a Parks and Recreation Committee representative. At that time, we only had Bowser Park. Supervisor sent me to a Parks and Recreation Training Course, where I received a certificate, worked with them, with Supervisor Kathy Lyga, who is now, passed away, but I worked with her specifically. And together with volunteers, we worked to renovate Bowser Park. State and local grants totaled more than thirty-five thousand dollars. A new basketball court, right up here. A new basketball court was installed, the pavilion was updated, and the old playground equipment was replaced with research and perfectly chosen equipment. Later, another grant was applied for, and we added the brown garbage cans and the bleachers that are at the ball field now. For the past eighteen years, I have managed the rentals of this community center and pavilion. I've seen hundreds of people come through here with love for this community center, the park, the ball field. Many keep coming back year after year. They have voiced their disappointment and sadness that the rentals have stopped. Bowser Park and the community center have been referred to by many as the heart of the township and a gem of the community. It's great, it's safe, and it's of value to our community. Lifelong residents have fond memories, as I do. I played at this park when I was a little girl. I brought my daughter, and I now bring my grandson. Many families come to this park. New families from Arden Wood and Sandy Bridge bring their children again, friends, children. And I'm asking that you would let them start their tradition and please allow them to have this beautiful space. Other communities would love to have this great space and park. We haven't, and we're fortunate that we do. We should appreciate it and should not be in favor of selling. A park is not something to discard or sell for other purposes. Bill Bowser had a dream. In nineteen forty-six, he bought a piece of farmland and built the baseball field. He spent fifty years involved with baseball. In two thousand and nine, he was inducted into the Butler Area Sports Hall of Fame. His family would like to see his legacy live on. The ball field is still being used today by the Bowser Interfaith Ball. Many remember the property being donated, that there was an agreement that would always, that it would always remain here. The deed states it was purchased, or some of it was purchased with a grant assistance. I would ask that due diligence take place. Talk to previous supervisors and those that were involved when the property changed hands, if there's no documentation applied. Maybe we should all learn the history of our communities. In closing, the current Parks Committee, which I am the chairman of the Parks Committee, and when I say Parks, I mean Bowser Parks and Forests Grace Park. We feel that Bowser Park is a special part of our community, full of our heritage, but we do not want to see it sold. We would ask the supervisors, please, to save Bowser Park and the ball field and keep it because it is our gem. And currently, I was gonna end with that, but a couple people asked me tonight, um, there is no plan to be able to ball field at this time, though more Forests Grace Park, that's not, was not part of our agenda at all. We didn't even have it on the survey because we have a ball field, we have a ball field here. So I will go back to my last sentence. We would ask the supervisors to save Bowser Park, the playground, and the ball field and keep our gem as keeping.
Thanks.
Uh, next up, we have Jerry Stevenson.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I'm gonna read it too. So I'm Jerry Stevenson, I'm at five five three Yellow Creek Road, been here for thirty years. So according to Penn State Data Center, Lancaster had eight hundred and forty residents between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four. That's a thirty percent growth over four and a half years. It's the second fastest, uh, by percentage in the state of Pennsylvania, ahead of Jackson Township. So we know, we know it's, uh, growing, and we should be proud that people want to live there. It's a small community and, you know, there's access to seventy-nine, seventy-five schools. So in the recent county heads-up plan, we estimated growth at seven hundred and seventy-five between twenty twenty and twenty thirty. We've already exceeded that, uh, July of twenty twenty-four. So growth is coming. Um, and again, we should be proud of that. But the, the township government needs, um, a way to grow, to handle the demands that are coming in, uh, code enforcement, zoning amendments, road maintenance, and the other daily tasks they perform. The current facility requires expansion, and the proposed saving of money and time for the property, uh, is a real savings. So the bullets I have here are the existing facilities are not adequate, um, and they're not sufficient for the short term or the long term. And the property enables us to stage growth, but we secure funding that on our own pace. Uh, facility allows us to expand the township and grows and should serve us well in for thirty years. The county, uh, is on board with paying for remediations. The county is also, uh, throwing in support to help pay grants. They're paying for consultants to help with the grants, and that'll help us achieve funding. Uh, total acquisition cost is about forty-eight thousand a year. That's something we can afford, and as we move facilities, we save on rent, lease funds, and later store site. I understand the plan is to retain Bowser Park and the community center. Existing structures on Myers property can be retrofitted more cost-effectively than construction, uh, at the new park. Uh, there's also the potential to take the park and trail system, uh, installer's run. So I support the plan.
Thank you, David. I'm sorry, I hope I get this next name right. Anne Chemmon? Chemmon. Thank you. Next, we have Darla Hensher.
My name is Darla Hensher. If people can't hear you, please raise your hand. And I live at four fifteen Scott Ridge Road. And I want to enlighten some of the people in this room as to the meaning of neutral. The dictionary defines it as not aligned with or supporting any side or position. When the two supervisors appointed Ms. Wiley as supervisor to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Tim Zinkia, it was stated by one of the supervisors that the reason to appoint her rather than Mike Dovin, who was chosen by the majority of the voters in the primary, to be the next supervisor was that she was neutral. Just how neutral is Ms. Wiley, who supported the candidate running against Mr. Dovin in the primary by even hosting a meet and greet for John Kozak? Ms. Wiley is now ramping up an aggressive writing campaign for herself to defeat Mr. Dovin in the general election by currently visiting residents and asking for their support. My question is, did the two supervisors knowingly participate in this dishonest charade? Or was it contrived by a handful of individuals that appear to be controlling the township? I believe this was deceitful, dishonest, unethical disappointment of Ms. Wiley is essentially a devious attempt to give her a leg up in the upcoming election. All individuals involved should be ashamed of this behavior, and all supervisors participating should think about resigning their positions. I've never in my forty-three years of residency in this township witnessed such underhandedness. This type of immoral, unconscionable behavior may be acceptable to the residents of the borough, but the residents of Lancaster Township do not welcome it or do we intend to tolerate such. Residents lose faith and trust in our township leadership when this type of behavior is permitted to prevail.
Next, next up, next up is Tom Beach.
Can I ask? I'll play. We're trained in laughing and cheering out there. Good evening. My name is Tom Beach, building six six one Scott Ridge Road. Supervisor meeting, if you could see your, starting to draw a lot of attention. I don't think it's because of the superior quality of the supervisors that we get. So let me read the minutes for a timestamp observation of the last township meeting. I will start by, uh, in minute, twenty-three minutes, seconds, ended the discussion on selections where interim supervisor began. So we had a discussion about the interim supervisor, and it was product of Mr. Dovin was, uh, one of the primary votes, Republican and Democratic side, but he was not, uh, chosen or considered apparent. At eight minutes, eleven seconds in, township manager addresses the budget shortfall, followed by supervisor comments. Additional comments addressed again by the township manager was silenced from supervising. It appears there's a detailed budget issue that were not done by the supervisors. In other words, when we were asking about the budget for issues, they didn't know how much the budget was, they didn't know if we had money in the bank, they didn't know if we were in a deficit. Township manager had to step in and provide that information to the supervisor, who should be on top of that. At eleven minutes, twenty-six seconds into the end of the meeting, change the township boundary with law, when Money Creek was addressed by the township manager, not the solicitor. They think the solicitor, the lawyer, should be reporting on township boundaries, not the township manager. Money Creek representative, like, were not done properly. So they had helped their lawyer and a representative from Money Creek, uh, well, come and speak at the meetings. Our township manager, again, uh, the supervisor, states that we follow the law. Well, that may not be true. Township solicitors agree to meet with money township, money township representatives at the meetings. Fifteen minutes and eight seconds in the meeting, Mr. Smith goes to Washington, a movie reference. This is an inspirational plea to do the right thing for the community. However, the message obviously went over the heads of the township supervisors. Maybe they should have stood up, so we wouldn't go out with our heads. And we'll get, we'll get a little more on that in a moment. At nineteen minutes into the, uh, meeting, vacancy selection committee conveniently selects the vacancy selection committee chairperson to fill the interim supervisory vacancy. In other words, they put a person on the committee, select township supervisor, who they select themselves. That's kind of like a closed-loop committee. How was, how was the committee selected? Nobody knows. Who selected the committee? Nobody knows. Who was on the committee? Well, we know what person was appointed, the person was selected. How convenient that the committee selects this chairperson to be the interim supervisor talked about a closed-loop system. Twenty-one minutes, thirteen seconds into the meeting, multimodal improvements of Scott Ridge Road. What were these improvements? Who's asking for them? And where on Scott Ridge Road? No discussion. Twenty-two minutes, thirty-two seconds into the meeting, township manager takes control of discussion. A new building discussion, rent money to pay for this not yet approved or provided. If rent doesn't get approved, the township will be on the hook for full cost. No answer. Township manager, twenty-four minutes, thirty seconds, tries to blame proposed changes on the complaint to one resident and cites a resident by name. I will go into that. Twenty-five minutes into the meeting, it dissolved into chaos. Twenty-eight minutes into the meeting, constituents raised a favorable concern on proposed property purchase of new township complex. Questioning the proposed evaluation, the suitable on the site, the available funds, again, grant money not yet realized, citing. Twenty-nine minutes in, the solicitor loses temper. Solicitor loses temper with a constituent who raised those questions, from, uh, raising the property purchase proposal. The solicitor's inappropriate behavior, raising his voice and exciting the hand gestures is, is, for four minutes, four of all, probably would have gotten admonished by the judge, if not held in contempt. But that's, that's, and that's, I find, with all of them, we talk up here, you watch smirk looks on their faces, shaking their heads, and, and acting as though we're a bunch of perfumers. At thirty-one minutes in the meeting, the manager, again, brings up rent money, again, in, in the solution to the issue. Again, despite it not yet approved. Thirty-three minutes in the meeting, existing firing range issues raised that was, was, that's actually proposed site. An individual had a firing range out there, I asked five-hundred yard range. Well, they say, oh, that's okay, not a problem. But as soon as they know, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a safety issue. And we're not gonna be able to have it out there. He's gonna lose his heart. They'll just change as they want. Thirty-three minutes, fifty-two seconds. Supervisor mentions two million of rent from the move. Oh, get two million dollars in rent. Again, no rent money is currently actually approved for the township manager. Again, steps in, says, no, we don't actually have money. Thirty-five minutes and thirty-two seconds into the meeting, supervisor table motion on the proposed purchase. That's probably the smartest thing they've done all day. Forty-two minutes in, on tradition, made the solicitor fix the administrative and procedural errors and curative management made by the solicitor and passed by the township supervisors. Curative was challenged and was withdrawn. Solicitor at forty-three minutes, forty seconds, honored to make the corrections without billing additional work for the township for him for fixing his mistakes. That's very McAdams, yeah. Fix his mistakes and not charge us. Forty-seven minutes in, we spot about the septic system here. The septic system and well, water issue raised by the P.A.D.E.P. resulting in township manager canceling future activity with township buildings. When pressed, it's not clear whether the D.E.P. was directing this or they had just asked the question, or some other reason. At forty-eight minutes, stormwater runoff issue briefly mentioned again. Again, our township manager is on Southwest Butler County Water Management group. And Lancaster Township is not. And our township manager does not live in Lancaster Township. At forty-eight minutes and twenty-four seconds into the meeting, my favorite part, I call it the mind report. All of a sudden, township manager has the department head tell us what happened last month. It's like being in a mind conviction. All of a sudden, a shaking hands and no answer. Nobody says anything, nobody asks anything, nothing's happening in our townships. When pressed, the department head said nothing in court, simply no, nothing. When pressed by the community, the police chief stated that they cannot comment on ongoing investigations. Again, the township manager interrogates herself and directs the police chief on what Again, the township manager interjects herself and directs the police chief on what and what he can't offer. If anyone should have said something, it should have been the solicitor, not the township manager, because that's the legal person, not the township manager. But not a word from him. He only speaks up when he knew one of the constituents. As pointed out, there are no one asking an updated or ongoing investigation, but a report on police activity, reports of traffic and enforcement. Were there any accidents reported? Were there any burglaries reported? Were there bear sightings? Were there bear in Ardenwood, the one on Chemo Hall? Wouldn't you like to know? And a report from the police? What kind of things? Was a cat at the tree? How many nine-one-one calls did they have? Name things that you did, I would like for them, the department heads, to be able to name five things that they did last month. Those one, five things they did last week, I'd be happy to find what they did all month. If I have one, Row Maintenance Manager Ashley, President, accepted the report filed from the community, handled it, a fine report that he finally gave after being pressed by the community. Again, at fifty-one eleven, the township manager interjects. The township, at fifty-three minutes, township manager, again, addressing D E P septic system issue were considered as only questions at this time. So, the D E P didn't say you can't use the system or something along with it, they were only asking questions about.
Mr. Beach?
Yes?
On all respect, five minutes is up for a lot.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I have three more things to do and then we're done. What are the problems I see in the township? I see symptom problems, right? One thing about this issue, the that, the other. The issue is not sincere, problem is something not getting done, it's problem with management not controlling and managing township. It's like watching the Three Studios, you know, or Martin Lewis, when there's only two of them.
Mr. Beach, please.
And now, I know my time to speak has come to an end, but I did satisfaction by this thing, the township supervisor, the township manager, the township manager.
Thank you. Please, next up we have Don Waven. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Sorry to be rude. Oh, Don?
Paul Santimer. Yeah, honestly, I thought that was a psyop sheet to report, but be that I did have the opportunity, I would like to ask some question about something you stated earlier.
Thank you.
Again, I'm Paul Santimer, wanted to do this one. And my question is, the property that you're proposing to buy has existing buildings. And you're talking about renovating those buildings to suit the needs of township. And I think the last meeting, there was some numbers thrown out as to what you felt would cost to renovate those buildings. Have those buildings been inspected?
We are having those inspected. The purchase agreement has continued.
Sure. So, I guess my question is, if they haven't been inspected yet, then how you even have a proposal as to what it would take to renovate?
We have.
And, and my other question would be, what, what are the plans and what are those based on as far as the new community? And I'm gonna sit down so you can ask these questions, thank you.
So, we had an architect do a conceptual assessment. And in that assessment, the conceptual, we had the buildings laid out, what we thought would be the community center and the buildings that we needed to house the growth that we're seeing. So, what we did was, we had an architect come in, do conceptual drawings on what we thought the buildings should look like, what need to be done, and what other buildings need to be built for this new community center.
And if they fell on inspection?
We can, we can, it's, it's an agreement with contingency. We can exit the agreement. Next up is Sherry. I assume that's.
Yeah, we thought it was a song, she's sorry.
All right, next up we have Dean, Dean Wack.
Give you the answer to everything I need, Rick.
Thanks, Dean. Barbara Burr.
I don't know about you, but one of my main reasons that I got so upset is because the week before your last meeting, the article was in the paper about them spending one point six seven million on an addition to the schools. And I go then, oh, my God, are you kidding? And then you guys did what you did, and it's another billion something. And you're thinking, I'm eighty-three years old, don't tell me the taxes aren't going up, they always go up. And if they don't, then they're gonna go up in appraisals, because I paid more this year than I did last year and the year before. So, it's my singular pleasure. My best advice to you, having, I'm educated, I've had businesses my whole life, you need to put the brakes on this thing. So, you get more information, more concrete information. It's important to me right now, I grew up here, my dad went to this school, he was born in nineteen oh nine, and I have all the books of the kids when he went to school here. Last year, when the voting took place, I brought my little grandson here to go with me. He could not believe that I went here with three rooms in one grade. I still remember Walter Barnard, stoking the fire back there, and old black belly stove. When I had a big job in Tampa, lived in Tampa for ten years and supervised three counties, I was sent to Kentucky to tell people how I was successful. These schools made my success, because you learn so much, not only in the township, but in the schools where we shared free grades. Can you imagine? My little grandson says, that's unbelievable. Yes, it is. So, you need to put the brakes on this thing. You don't have enough information, you don't have any concrete information. If somebody's telling you, if you don't buy that property, somebody perhaps, perhaps houses it, but no, they won't, because there's no suing job here yet. And you're gonna have to put that in. All the way if it comes up this way. It's not up this way yet, I know, because I live, I'm on the road.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, next up we have Cindy Dees.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Dees, I live at one six seven East Road, I'm part of here. And I'm gonna do, I have something to say very brief, and I'm gonna use a plural pronoun, because these thoughts are also from my nephew Christmas, who couldn't be here tonight, and he wasn't for her supervisor. And my thoughts are going to align with Debbie's on the property. At this juncture of looking at the future, we feel a study of the current property would be done. We, this township community, already owns two properties. And the first park, probably ever bought, a walk-in trail, nothing else. It has been owned fifteen plus years. How will everything else get done now? Adding property to a park doesn't make it a bigger and better park if you have no funds, which we won't. And that's my opinion.
Next, next up we have Tony Leo.
What was the name?
Tony Leo.
Can you hear you?
Did anybody who came here today have a hard time finding? Six, it comes on the cons of why we're gonna move across the street. You have to read this, and I can figure out what I thought of it. Great. When did you know about the six hundred Perry Highway property?
June.
Why did you wait this long to let the public know about the township buying?
They looked for sale, we looked at it as an option to expand property.
But you didn't tell us.
What was the story, before you jumped the original building that was gonna be building apart?
I don't have that information.
Six thousand? And again, I, like many other residents from this township, were promised a building on horse brings property. Another thing, on the architectural rendering of the new facility, they didn't add, so bad, they didn't add the white fence. I mean, the administration, so badly wants that. Anyway, the appraisals on the six hundred Perry High School Highway was done on June The letter was sent to the township June tenth. The Kings Alley, this property, was appraised on May twenty-seventh. August sixth, the township would email me a D E P document that was sent to me. The document is a fact sheet on identifying public water systems. August seventh, I contacted D E P Northwest Bureau of Disorder, spoke with Justin Bashaw, he's the operational section chief for safe drinking water, and Eric Kitchler, the environmental group manager, deals with septic. Each of these reps made it clear that the D E P does not come into municipalities and challenge their water supply. So, the document I got from the office, it's on the D E P website, so I couldn't online. And then, according to the D E P, the only property in Lancaster Township that the D E P regulates is Perry Lane system. And, just like you like to know. And these were the days of the public became aware of the acquisition of six hundred Perry Highway July first. You had an executive meeting, and that was brought up in July twenty-second. Who are supervisors decided they wanted to vote on purchasing that property? With the composition of the public, it was tabled. August eleventh, there was a special meeting for information on six hundred Perry Highway property, the meeting was a disaster. Everyone who was assigned to explain the pros and cons, non-answer questions. One topic they tried to enforce was the well and septic system was not adequate to share with the administration office and the community center. Now, again, the appraisal for one thirteen Kings Alley has efficiencies. Under improvements, are there any physical efficiencies or adverse conditions that affect livability, silence, structural integrity of public properties? And the answer was no. Under the site section, are there any adverse site conditions or external factors, easements, encroachments, environmental concerns, land uses? No. Under additional comments, all utilities were in working condition, according to the appraisals. So, is the septic and water for this little community here acceptable? Does it have a problem?
There is, there is a concern, right top.
A concern. Well, you did put that on to the appraisers, or you did mention that to them.
He didn't do the appraisal, the appraiser did.
He took it upon himself to say it was no problem. And, who ordered the community center to be closed for rent?
We get over concerns from what has been expressed by the township.
Can you hear you?
Stand up, hear you.
The township did. Tom?
D E P has been classifying certain buildings based on the number of meetings that you have per month and the usage of those buildings. They oftentimes require a public water supply abundant. Township would need to do for the well supply that they currently have. So, in order to do that, we would have testing of the well, daily and monthly testing, which becomes a cost prohibitive. One of the townships that we have, we're trying to get out of those requirements, connect with public water and water. So, certainly is a concern for the township, for someone who is sick drinking the water from the well, they go to the D E P and explain how this is done, there would be an issue with the township, you're talking about it. That's why that is being done. Again, it's just based on the number of people that use it, based on the township facility as criteria.
Are you canceled?
Tom? Do you have a letter from the D E P that's to have? It's in the regulations. Well, the document I was saying you were preparing was a identifying the public waters. We're not on the public waters. And I looked up a lot of things, and there's another one about community waters. We're not even on the community waters. So.
Why don't they put Sealy Water in here?
Well, there's a cap on it, but. So, anyway, I'd like to see all of the correspondence that the township has with the D E P on this well and stuff. And I wanna know who, what person you spoke with. I gave you two that I spoke with.
You're gonna be there anyway.
So, anyway, yeah, it seems like I was misled, I like you guys, I mean, I worked with you, there was no problem, but it took so long for you to come to the public, to tell your rule on the five, this property, you misinform people about the well and septic situation here. So, it kind of bothered me a little bit. And then, a couple more. Why do we need a full-time financial executive secretary? What's changed?
We'll cover that in a minute.
And then, another thing, do you identify a lot of the township by the appraisals? I think there's three lots here. The administration buildings and the. So, a lot of this wasn't brought up at the special meeting. Like I said, when you're asking questions, everybody says, oh, talk from there, talk from there. And that was it. And I, like I said, I think it was a disaster, and the public didn't approve because of that.
Thank you, Tony. Next up, we have John Wyer.
Evening, hey, John Wyer, three three five Campbell Road. Heard a lot of people speak tonight, and I heard you folks answer some of the questions. You know, how many of you have been to Jackson Township meeting? Go ahead. How many have been in Jackson Township meeting though? It isn't even as big as this room. You're saying we need a bigger facility. Jackson Township's just set millions of dollars to build that building, and it's not as big as ours right now. So, why do we wanna move? I don't understand why we wanna spend money. I went up to four of township and looked at their building that they just built here a couple of years ago. Beautiful building. Beautiful building, less than a million dollars.
Yeah.
And it's a beautiful building, yay, it's a pole building. But you know what? We don't need Mary's fancy four-story building with a balcony on it. We're proud of our township. This building here, the Boy Scouts donated it, and their time to put the windows in this building. We built the benches for the picnic pavilion, we built benches for the park, the Boy Scout. But Joe Pleasant single-handedly destroyed our Boy Scouts roof, because you threw us out of the building. Wouldn't let us meet in here anymore. Because we spent all this money renovating it. And to this day, these restrooms do not meet ADA standards. They're not ADA handicapped accessible. You started building this addition out front, we were gonna build a whole new ramp. It just seems like we don't finish anything around here, under this new administration. And is this what this new purchase of property is gonna be? Just another thing that we're not gonna finish, and you're not telling us what it's gonna cost to renovate the building. And based on what you just said, you're gonna have to build a new building there anyhow. You've admitted you're gonna build a new building for us. So why not just build a nice building like Horford Township built up there? Save us a million dollars that you want to waste on a piece of property that we donated. We're proud of our park, and Bowser Park was donated by the Bowser kids, and it will stay as Bowser Park. Yes, the township bought the piece of property behind it with the grant money. And I was part of buying that. And this, I have all the deeds to this building, the park, and all the property, thanks to Nina Barclay through the Historical Society, she got me copies of all the deeds. We have it. We want this to stay, as a reference, we want this township building to stay right here, and I don't see why we can't keep our meetings right here. There's nothing wrong with it, but we could build a new building over there to host the police and the administration. Only don't need a four-story, seven-million-dollar complex. This is our country, this is our township. And as these people here are speaking, I think you ought to take a little note, that they're not in favor of what you want to do.
Amen.
I want to know one thing. I said D E P was here to inspect that property. Who is he all, who is the D E P agent?
Oh, he is.
And do we have a report?
He said if you want, he's not going to publish a report, but you can contact him. His name is Matt Wayland.
Matt Wayland?
His phone number is, and I'll give it to anybody.
Let me have that, please. There's live call on back.
This is his cell phone, he said he'll answer anytime. Eight one four, eight five three, five two, or excuse me, five eight two eight. And I have his email as well. Do you want that?
Who's the architect? What was that?
Five eight two eight, eight one four, eight five three, five eight two eight.
You know, I just find it hard to believe that the D E P agent would come down here, spend his time, and then not gonna print a report. I find it very hard to believe.
He was called, he was called anonymously, and he came to the township office.
That's true. Hey, hey, that's true.
Okay, so the township did contact him to do an inspection.
Somebody the township did.
Somebody in the township did. Do you plan to do a full phase one study on the property?
Continency of sales.
But I'm thinking you better take a little note of what the people here are telling you.
Thanks, John. Next, we have Charles Scott.
Charles Scott, one of the three locusts, not the latest general members of the board. I am going to quote from you directly from a transcript. This transcript was taken directly off the video that Mike Dovin provides every month for us here at our township, and I thank him for that. Nothing in this transcript has been diminished, added to, or reduced. Um, whenever chairman asked for the committee reports, our township manager said, if anyone is having water issues, please contact the township. And on that note, we have received word from the D E P that their water group is investigating whether entities should be on a public water system. The township building and the community center are not on public water, it is on well water, and we also have one septic system. We are having that septic system inspected, but because of that recommendation was what we limited the use of this building for public events. Debbie has worked so hard, and she brings so many wonderful events to this building, but we have to limit that. So we do not, we will not be scheduling any more events this year until we actually approach the idea of bringing public water up here. So I will be posting that information from the D E P on the website. That information has not been posted on our, on our township website to this day. Mary then went on to address the situation with West Lancaster Road and discussing that it was gonna cost more than seventy thousand dollars to repair. At the end of the meeting, uh, resident Donloff said, you asked, asked a question that she, that she said, you said the D E P is coming in to do an inspection on the septic up here? The township manager said, no. What I said was, the D E P has an issue with this community center space, and I will publish that report. It has not been published. At a time when you are using water and you have events where people can drink the water, and there is more so many people, more than so many people in any given space, for example, this meeting tonight as we are here, the assumption from the D E P is that you are all using the bathroom and using water. They would have an issue with that. And this building is used quite often, I'm talking about the same well as shared with the township building. And I emphasize this next statement, so they, the D E P, are questioning whether it is safe for us to use well water for this building for public events. Jake Whackman stood up and said, how many employees are in the building? Uh, the manager replied, there are two employees at any given time, and three road crews that use the restrooms and the sinks, so five people total. That space cannot be limited, but this space here can be limited for the use of this building. There is public water on the other side of Route nineteen, what is that cost, and can we do it? But we also need to make sure the public, that the single septic system on the property, that it, that is older, is in good enough shape to continue to be used. Now, after reviewing those comments, something that, something about all that just didn't sound plausible and right to me. So I personally contacted, like Tony Leo did, the D E P groundwater division out of Newfield, PA. I spoke with Mr. Justin Blakshaw. Mr. Justin Blakshaw denied any knowledge of any investigation into any townships and their water use. Mr. Blakshaw further stated that his office was way too busy to be investigating public event space, water usages, or sources. Mr. Blakshaw did mention that someone, Mr. Blakshaw did mention that someone from the township contacted his office seeking information on how to identify a public water system. He directed me to that resource on the uh, D E P website, which is a fact sheet, and I have that fact sheet here in my hand. And I'm assuming since um, Tom stood up and addressed this issue earlier, then you were the one that contacted D E P seeking identification of a public water system, is that true?
I did not.
You did not, okay, so someone else in the township did. Information found on this fact sheet on the D E P website sounds very much like statements that were made at last month's board supervisor meeting to explain why this community center can test be shut down for public rentals. So in closure, I contend that certain components of this fact sheet were used to comprise a narrative, possibly one in which public water would be, have to be forced to become upon this campus, and in doing so, make this property more marketable to be sold. I thank you for your time, and I do have one other comment. Uh, one other person mentioned about the website and how there's a lack of contact information on there. As the chairman of the board of auditors, my name has been removed from the website. And I, I would appreciate it if my name and all the rest of the members of the board of auditors would be properly listed on the, on the township website. I thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read the, the first name off, but the last name's Sepienza, five five six Scott Ridge Road.
Cause that's really nothing to do with the township, like a personal thing with your neighbor.
Can you stop by the office later in the week and talk to somebody you like?
Thank you.
Come by the office?
Yes.
So I would talk to several of you ahead.
Perfect.
Danny?
Uh, next up, next up, we, next up, we have Earl Garing.
Earl Garing. She names Earl Garing, one forty Waitstown Road, over where the spring is at. That road is a safety hazard. Down the block, there's loose stuff, and if you come around there, now cars have front wheel drive, tearing that so. Up the road, there's eight to ten inches, and it's about five to six inches wide, a hundred or two hundred foot strips. There's three places, one in the driveway, one or two other places that have flat top, and the water's worst shot, and it's this deep. You get off that and hit that head on with your top. And there's two culvers that's within three inches of the road. Coming downhill, there's one strip about fifty feet wide, it's about a foot and a half, maybe two foot of road. You have to hit it, or hit a car, hit the mailboxes. The mailbox is right below. And right above that, there's a family, a bus stop. And that culvert's in where that bus stops, and you stop, pass that bus, you almost gotta go to the culvert. Now, there's a hundred cars every morning and evening walking down that road, cause they don't want to go through Franklin City and the construction on sixty eight. They take that lane to go to Bubba. And the rest of the road on up, the whole thing, it's a safety hazard. I don't know whether the police department tells you anything, or the road crew, they walk them down. There's three places that, that the ditch is higher than the road, and I can't see why the road crew wouldn't pull over and pipe the shovel or port and clean it so it runs down. It's like a block.
We do have a road project planned for Waitstown.
I know it's planned, it's March, you know what? School starts this week. You've got five buses every morning, five buses every night, now you've got kids that got licensed, that are teenagers going to school. So you're gonna have more cars going up than that. In the middle of the day, or during the day, mornings, we sometimes have a dozen cement trucks going up. Dozen triachs going up the other week, falling stone up. And the other weekend, there's a dozen of them going down. And then you have all the UPSs, and there's four or five of them that walk them down that road. And all those people that live up in Prospect, and all parts gray and potter, and the new houses that's up the road there. Tell you, it's a safety hazard, understood? And even the drivers, the drivers, snowplow, sure, they're professional drivers. You come down, walk them down that road at five or six in the morning when it's dark and wet, and a ten-foot snowplow comes down the road. You know they're ten feet wide, even a truck that appears on is eight and a half. And this building stuff over here, most of these people, seniors, citizens, we're on a fix, we can't go and protest and get more money. We can't afford it. And since, since nineteen, the COVID, everything has jumped, you know it. And machinery parts have dumped, so anything that's got any pieces or parts fixed.
Thank you, sir.
Can't afford it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have John Perry.
John Perry, ten twenty-two West Lancaster Road, property directly behind Forest Springs Park. Uh, few things, one, at the meeting last week, I asked every member, including Mary, whether or not the full appraisal would be put on to the website, if not, I have to request it later that night. I do appreciate you sending everything to me. Uh, I reviewed the full appraisal. Well, I'd like any of the board supervisors or married to ask or answer to the question is, you know the difference between a financially backed appraisal and a real estate opinion appraisal? And if so, could you stand up and give that definition? Cause you just nodded your head, and I'd love to know.
Fanny Mae, that, is that super turn?
Sure, yeah.
We went, we went through the three, the last one.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, but there are two very, I'm gonna get to my point, Greg. I'm asking, do you know the difference, okay? Here, here's my other question, why is it that you have the same appraisal, different approaches? The same appraiser that did this property, that did six hundred Perry Highway, two, did two very different approaches to the appraisal? Do you even know what the difference is in the approach to the appraisal that they did?
Are you referring to the fact that we're looking at purchasing and then also looking at just the value of this property?
No, I'm not. I'm talking about this property was done as a cost appro- This one, and this one was done as a cost approach, meaning as a rebuilding cost of this, and the one over there was done as a comparable sale approach, outside of the Fanny Mae and Gray Mack House. The comps were outside of the area. In case you don't know, anybody, and being curious, our three comps were three sixteen Denny Road in Middlesex Township. Had a ten-acre parcel with a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, very nice home on it, in the Marter School District. The second comp was three fifty-six Marwood Road in Winfield Township in Cabot. In the Knoxville District, which had nearly fifty-four acres, a five-bedroom, three-bath comp. And the final comp, our only comp that was even remotely close, was at one eighteen Rolling Hills in Jackson Township, a thirty-point-one-four acre parcel with a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house on it. Here's my point, which is what I've been saying all along. I will restate what I've restated multiple times, Greg, to you, Mary, to you, in front of most of these five votes. I am not a hundred percent opposed to the six hundred Perry Highway. You are wildly out of line on evaluation there, based on where they went for these comps. They're outside of school district, they're outside of township, they're outside of comparable style. When we have one single family home sitting on a piece of property that is thirty, fifty, sixty acres, it is wildly different than what you were trying to compare it. We are trying to fit the square peg into the round hole to fit the narrative. Second point, you sent me the plans for what was to be built at the Forest Springs Park. Greg, you mentioned earlier, a year ago, plans were redrawn. Mary, did you send me the plans that were redrawn, or the plans from five years ago?
I sent you the plans that were five years ago, and here's why. Because whenever the plans were redrawn, supervisors felt that the new footprint was too small.
Okay.
That we couldn't grow with that footprint.
I'm glad you brought up the footprint, so we're gonna talk about it for a little bit here. The plan, Mr. Leo, you asked the question, the plan is five thousand nine hundred and eighty-one square feet of finished space. The plan is five thousand nine hundred and eighty-one square feet of finished space. Would anybody in the Board of Supervisors care to take a guess at the size of this room that we're standing in tonight? Somebody take, somebody take a guess. Eighteen by fifty. In this grand and glorious plan of the new seven million dollar project, the community center room where these meetings would be held, that we need so much more space for, is twenty-nine by forty. However, the township manager's office is twenty-one by fourteen. You can shake your head and say, come on, and I'm gonna call you out right now. Because I was called out for disrespect last time and told I was gonna be put into handcuffs for being disrespectful, yet you can roll your eyes and shake your head at me?
Mr. Perry, you can talk.
I'm gonna ask for the same, I sat back there quietly, never said a word, Greg.
And you haven't said a word.
Let him know, we can hear him.
Our reactions need called out publicly. He's always picking up, so we can hear him.
And we agree with him.
All right, here's the deal. A, I think you wanna keep fitting the narrative that you want to. You believe that it was too small, yet I'm, I think, the fifth or sixth person that have said the Taj Mahal is not needed. It's not needed, it's overwhelming the design approach of everything that you have in here. My proposal would be this, table everything. You've got two properties, you have an incredible plan to develop the property at Four Springs Park. As I said last week, when not everybody was here, do it in phases. If you had to choose the number one priority to move something within the township from this campus to another, what would your number one priority be? The police, the office, or the grounds crew? What would you move first? Any, any of you guys, Greg, go ahead, I'm asking what the priority would be.
I would get office and, and a meeting complex.
Okay, office and a meeting complex, right? So your meeting complex is twenty-five, twenty-nine by forty, right? Let's add some bathrooms to that. How much space do we need for offices and how many offices do we physically need? I'm asking a serious question.
Could, could you ask the administration, because we need a conference room where we can have secure meetings, where we can talk to employees without the entire staff hearing?
Yep, do you need one that's eighteen by twenty-six?
No.
And that's what's on your plan?
No, there, there's no need for that.
Okay.
We need at least three offices, preferably four.
Okay.
So that the staff can have separate space so they're not listening to each other's conversations.
Okay, here's my-
We would like to have a secure and large file room so that we can-
Greg, they're not in the basement here, get it, oh.
They're in the basement, they're up on shelves, they're everywhere.
By the way, can I ask a question about files? It's twenty twenty-five, aren't we keeping paper files on digital?
We're trying to digitize, digitize this.
Yeah, but so here's my point, Mary, do we need them moving forward? If we're, if we're going to digitize, right? I work in an industry that's lots of paper. We digitized ten years ago. My point is, don't build a storage room when it's not needed in the future, when we have these internet machines that do amazing things where you just scan and you have access to them. By the way, you don't have to go search for boxes, you don't have to have file systems. I do too, right? But what I'm saying is, you have current storage, you can keep digitizing what you have. The need, I'm asking you what your needs are, right? Because we, as the people of the community, I agree, right? There are certain needs, I don't think files brings a need.
The file room, we have to keep certain documents on hand, we have to have.
Paper.
And we keep a lot of the paper copies because the planning commission likes to, likes to look at paper occasionally too. And right now, we get three giant copies, three or seven for planning commission. Every time, anytime there's a new plan that comes up, they get paper copies. That's a requirement. These are things, and please keep in mind, I realize this group is very frustrated at me, but you had five managers in a very short period of time. We are so far behind just trying to get up to speed on what we have and what we don't have.
So why take on another project?
Because I don't, because I don't-
It's a contradiction in our eyes, right? So you can understand the contradiction that's there. Do I disagree? I said to all of you guys multiple times, I don't disagree that some of the points that you guys pointed out may be valid. What I'm saying is, I still say, it's not vetted far enough. I think if you, who's, the second appraisal that's happening, is it happening post-sales agreement or pre-sales agreement?
It has to happen post-sales.
Close, and be, and then the sale would be contingent on the three things we talked about.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna put an appraisal contingency into the contract? Is specific, okay, perfect.
It's already in there, and like-
Yeah, please, go ahead.
It's, so, we are acquiring a piece of property at a, a reasonable price. We would or not, but we're gonna, I, I'm speaking now. We are going to get a second appraisal, it is in the contract.
By who?
That's, we'll decide who to get an appraisal, I'm still speaking, please, thank you.
Can you say enough, please?
Sure. The, um, what we build on that property is going to be completely contingent on the money we acquire through grants. We are gonna move through this slowly and methodically. The township of today, as the township of two thousand and fifteen compared to today, is vastly different. The township of ten years from now is gonna be vastly than it is, different than it is today. We are gonna build a building that we can acquire and get funds through the appropriate government resources, and we're gonna build what's appropriate. We understand you don't want anything fancy, and I don't think we're gonna build anything fancy, and the design will change over time based on what we think we need. But not buying property and planning for the future is a huge, huge disadvantage to the community. You, you're right, and we should get another estimate, and that was something that you brought up. I acknowledge that, and we are doing that. We have listened to the community. No joke, we have. We are not raising taxes. We're proposing building this in a way that makes sense for the members of the township, slowly, methodically, and providing space for the future. Whether y'all believe it's common, it is. And I honestly, I appreciate all your comments. Some of them have been fantastic. I've got some great emails and phone calls from some really professional people. But you know what? I'm up here, I have a brain, I'm gonna process everything you say, and I'm ultimately gonna do what I think is right. So continue to tell me what you think, and I will continue to move forward in the way that I think is appropriate based on the information, not that I just get from people in this room. But there's how many people in here? Fifty? There are thirty-six hundred residents in this township. Thirty-six hundred. So there are many, many more voices who are very interested in securing a spot for the township to grow. And believe it or not, there are people, Debbie, I'm an advocate for valid park. I don't want it to go away. I want as many parks in this township as we can, because it has value for me, my kids, my grandkids. And you know what? We're acquiring more park space for you, Debbie, where other people can raise their kids, go to the village, walk on trails, and do things that they won't be able to do because the township will not be able to afford it in the future. That, that's my two cents, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, are we doing a loan for the million dollar purchase?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so just to clarify, you probably know this, that we have no control over using that appraisal, because it has to be ordered for a third-party service from the Dog Frank laws that went into place in two thousand and eleven. Okay, so we will have no control over it, which is great, right? We want it to be wildly independent and based on the, um, Fanny and Freddie guidelines of what's going to happen. Because your lender will have to hire a third-party company to send an appraiser out there to do the appraisal, so that's one thing. The second thing that I take issue with though is, I think your informational packets that you handed out last Monday were wildly misleading then. Because your disparaging costs were based on a building that you have no intentions of really building, that was from five years ago, that you yourselves got new plans to put together because you recognized it was too large. So your seven million dollar projection of the, of the project on your packet that you handed out last week was the comparison of, if we develop Four Springs Park, it's seven million dollars, look at how much less this costs to buy six hundred Perry Highway. What I'm saying to you is, if you're, if you're going through the, the process of getting other plans and recognizing, you just said it, Mary, no, we do not need a conference room that is twenty, I'm sorry, eighteen by twenty feet, or twenty-six feet. That's your, that's your plan.
You talked about the office.
No, 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 I'm looking at the conference room directly across from the, the, uh, community room labeled conference, right? I'm looking right at the plan. So-
Yeah, I thought you referred to my office.
I did refer to your office as twenty foot, ten inches by thirteen eight, I called it twenty-one by fourteen, forgive me for rounding up.
But I had, I did not-
I know you didn't design that, but your, but your point of the meeting last week was, you compared your current project, which fits your narrative of, we should buy this property. You compared it to a plan that's five years old, that you even a year ago did, and when I asked for the plans, you only gave me the five-year-old plans. You could have easily, in full disclosure, said, here's another set of plans that we did a year ago that we felt might have been too small, that we did not vet out in cost because we felt they were too small. But you didn't do that because it doesn't fit the narrative, in my belief.
Uh, that was because the supervisors, during the meeting, I sent them the information, and I heard back from supervisors that they liked the original plan, and that's what they wanted to stick with. That's the only reason. It wasn't because I was trying to be diverse and provide anything.
But here's my point, they've got a six- That, that, the plans to build the community center at six hundred Perry Highway, because the other buildings that already exist are there. What would be the square footage of that building that you proposed at six hundred Perry Highway?
I can't tell you because we would have to spend-
But you have bu-, you have a budget on item board, so how could you have a budget on it?
We estimated the cost based on information from-
From the architect.
From the architect.
So what was the square footage that the architect proposed?
He did not, he did not propose an actual square footage.
So how do you come up with a price, guys? You, you see how ridiculous it sounds to us, especially somebody that's in the industry? Is I, if I came to a developer and I said, well, I have an architect, maybe said something about a building that could possibly be built, we don't know how many square footage it is, we don't know the style or layout of it, but here's about what the cost would be, so I can put a number on a sheet that fits the narrative, I'll please go buy six hundred Perry Highway. You can see the skepticism of the community, that we, the people, are questioning what's going on with these spending of dollars when we've got plans that should be modified to fit the things of, hey, let's look at pole buildings, look for alternatives. I mean, you have a stone turret on this land, there's a two for story stone turret, but the supervisors believe it's the best plan still? That's where I would question it. Here's my whole point. I think your valuation is way out of line. I think you haven't vetted the circumstances far enough. I don't think you have plans that are actually in line with what the township needs, and I think there's no way in any shape or form that there should be a vote tonight to think that we can possibly enter into a contract hoping that there's gonna be contingencies to get it through. Because once we vote it through, if the contingencies get through, you're buying that piece of property whether we like it or not. I call for a vote of no to buy six hundred Perry Highway.
All right, next up, we have Dennis Hamilton.
I've got a sound with this live three nine, Scott Ridge Road. Please talk me on if you can't hear. I want to thank the supervisors for tabling the motion initially, and making the effort to have an informational meeting last Monday. I went to that meeting and had made a very convincing, uh, argument and laid out photos that everybody else came away from that section of it feeling much better about the plan. Then I went to the financial section, and it was just, the opposite, it came away more concerned and more questionable than I had gone into it. We were told, uh, that it was not, hasn't been a tax increase in forty years that I've held. And then they admitted, yes, there's required taxes, well, tax is a tax, right? And is there gonna be a special community development tax for this building or whatever else? My primary concern, like many people here, is I think we can't keep raising our taxes. If we keep raising our taxes just a little bit, you know, just some bills or whatever, school district does it, property taxes do it, county does it, state does it, federal does it, keep that enough, eventually we're over a hundred percent, you know, just watch. If we were able to go forty years with a certain population, a certain tax rate, we'd significantly increase, as we've already mentioned, our population. That population should carry the additional burdens on the township. That's, that's my primary, my primary concern. Second day, I came with, with a meeting and I thought, you know what, I'm gonna go to the planning commission and see what they think about all this. Planning commission chairman was asked to speak at last Monday night's meeting, a meeting by one of the supervisors, and he called on it unannounced. But he made a really valid point, he said, he's really excited that they've got some more engineering, civil engineers on the planning commission. And I said, that's fantastic, you know, this guy's really, you know, a knowledge base, and they're not having to learn as they go. So I go to the planning commission meeting, and he starts talking a little bit about this just as it begins, and I find out that a number of the planning commission meeting people didn't even know about the plan. Why do we have a planning commission? Or is it mislabeled, or that's a concern I have here. I think it would have been appropriate to take it to them. I don't know, I, I could, I could go on and on, but I don't, I don't want to. To be honest, the list of questions that he read trouble my. And I spent a lot of time putting those together, and I didn't want to share those with anybody, and the written answers that they gave me, they gave me a good, written answer to many of those questions. And I fully support this plan, and I think it's a great thing for the township. You can really assure me that it's not gonna mean raising our taxes. And I don't, you know, that's, that's difficult to make that assurance, I'm not sure if you can do that. Something that was mentioned to me, uh, is that property now currently rental property or residences and private residence? Who knows, sir? It's a combination.
Oh, it's both.
It's both. There's a primary residence, there's the shop, the print shop. Behind that, there are one, two, three apartments. Is that, and there's another-
Secondary home.
And there's a secondary home as well. Don't buy the idea that we're gonna get rents. I don't think we can count on that. But if you can convince me that that four thousand dollar is gonna be covered until we have enough accumulation of more funds by keeping that rental property. I don't know what it rents for, but if you add that rental income, plus what we're saving by not having to rent the police station and the other, does it cover the without knowing? If it covers that, then I say we'll bet. Sorry, I don't quite agree with that. The logic to me says that would make sense. So I think if you guys, I would not wanna be in your show. I'm afraid this is already done, you know, and you know how this is all gonna go. So I'm just hopefully moving forward to consider all the other things that people said. You know, again, I looked at the, the building in detail later on, let's see this brick fire plate. Why do we need a brick fireplace on our original building? So why do we keep it plain and simple? We're all plain and simple folk, or higher, I'm like, and we just want it to be simple. We don't need for every country, we don't need all this fancy stuff. We go forward with this, keep it plain and simple, so we can keep this park, and let's pay to have the water tapped into here, so we don't have the water issues anymore. A septic system can last a long time, it may be pumped once or twice, uh, more often than, once or twice a year, more often than normal. But you can keep that septic system going a long time if you do that. So, board on our end of vote is, aren't we being able to do that anymore? Door machines are tremendously efficient, and get water up there so we can keep this building, and we keep this park. And to move forward, be cautious, I think you've made considerable number of mistakes in how this was, you know. If you would have been more open upfront to us, if you would have involved the planning commission. And if we had had some public hearings first before bringing it to a vote, would have been maybe a little better stomach, twice the residence. Appreciate what you guys do, and I wanna support you, but I need you to give me reasons to do that, and trust me in the process.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Last on the list, we have Bill Pragbyak.
Joe Plasnack, one six five Stone Church Road. I'd like to talk a little bit about the group of people who represent this township. And I'd like to start with Ed, his position is for the master Ed. You came from Mechanics Township, how many years' experience?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years, and you wanted to work in that township closer to home, and you're representing the township. Quality, worth and, uh, experience? It's Mike.
Please.
Mike Correll, how many years did you work part-time, Mike?
Eighteen years, and then you got a full-time position? And from the time that Dennis, myself, and Chris Neese were supervisors, we went from a seven in the morning to eleven o'clock at night at the police department to a twenty-four-seven police department, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. For the public's sake, there's spy time, full-time officers. And there's one, I, I do wanna add something, there's one statistic that's never reported, and that's the, the record of deterrence of people going slow for the Lancaster Township because they know that the cops are on, or on the White's Out Road, or, you know, uh, other things. But, uh, that's, I just wanted to add that. Quan Quan, township engineer, Quan, how long have you been an engineer for the township?
Uh, since two thousand.
Since two thousand, you represent Zilly Borough, went for the township, White Castle Township. Very professional man, excellent, Ed is true. Sylvia Wack, we grew us, you lived in the township a long time, you worked in the office previously, went for another job, then came back to serve the township.
I came back to help because I knew that five different, five different managers, everything was done. Nothing's getting done, we are still trying to find files. I came back so I could help the township get in, get in shape.
Another quality person. Shirley, you were involved in the health field.
Twenty-seven years with Open Heart, I worked my way up from customer service all the way to a sell, sales executive, um, yeah, and I have stellar performance. I graduated from NCU University with a Bachelor of Science in Education.
Another quality person, inspiring whenever you come in the office.
So don't you just say something, I don't live here. If I was in a different point in my life, I was like, I'm sixty-four years old, I would have bought, Sylvia's probably even been perfect. I love the community here, and I wanna do what's right to do. So even though I don't live here, my heart's here.
Okay, and Mary, yeah, you, you drew, your family had a business?
Yeah, my family's, I've always lived in the general area. I grew up in Bieber County, Dr. D Township, and I've lived in Zilly Noble for thirty-three years.
And had a borough council, shared one with the borough council?
I was, I was, and I was on that position. I was in the position, I was on borough council for fourteen years.
Okay, and take a look at Zilly Noble and how that's prospered, how they're bringing back the storefronts. And that just doesn't happen by any septic planning.
Great.
Great. John, your, your firm, they specialize in municipal government?
Let Joe talk, please.
How many years have you been?
I don't know, I'm ashamed to admit, twenty plus.
Okay, great, you can future forward to, businessman, own business, go ahead. How was your business?
Thirty, thirty-five year engineer, thirty-five years of business, business owner. Went through acquisitions of companies, phase one, phase two, phase three.
Another quality person. Rich, you're in the health field.
I am, um, the, I've owned my own business for thirty years. I started it when I was twenty-five, and I operate open-heart surgery programs for hospitals with, with open-heart surgery programs. Specifically, I employ and provide perfusionists who run heart-lung bypass machines and artificial hearts and dialysis and things of this nature. My company comes in and we provide a turnkey solution to hospitals that need those programs who deal with all the professionals, all the equipment, all the disposable supplies. And I've been doing it for a while.
And you have a providing a business plan.
Always, yes.
Lisa, I don't know you that well, uh, I guess you knew Michael, your brother, and she knew your husband. I can remember whenever your family, whenever your father-in-law passed away at a young age, your husband had to step up, he was a pilot through West Air, he started a trucking company called PMF.
MHF.
Yeah. Missy Bockars.
Great.
MHF. They started out with one used Mack cab over from, and it prospered, and I don't know where it's at today, I haven't kept track of it because I've used to see the trucks all over the place. But my point is, you have all these people that are quality people representing you, and although you not, not understand completely what you're doing, but they're looking out for all the people in the township. And they can swing it financially and come up with a business plan for it, it's win-win because the, the development for the longest time, everybody said it was parameter, it was moving north. It migrated over to the right, now it's coming back, look at how many red lights it put in, that's out of this town now. And people are moving north, and they want their own space. So the things, the, the things are, I say the same, it's just not reality. We have the plant ed, Dave's involved with the PRD, Land Residential Development, uh, that needs to be wrapped up. But, uh, you know, we live in a great township, and I think we owe everybody here a lot of respect. And, uh, I'm with them, if they can come up with a business plan for this, I'm with them because it's looking towards the future. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Joe, thanks. That's all we, that's all we have. Go ahead, ma'am.
I just wanted to say something real quick.
Name it, Ed, I'm sorry.
My name is Lisa Appleby, I live on one-nine-three Yavas Creek Road, and I love it. I walk my dog down there all the time, he's coming here, he's walking slow. I came here because I wanted to support these people that I know are working so hard. I missed the last meeting and I was really excited when I saw this meeting. I'm a retired school teacher, um, I taught at Duquesne and City School, I grew up, I'm here for eighteen years there and twenty-eight altogether. Um, I was president of the union for the school. And I am applauding how our community acts in a meeting. First of all, a meeting like this, you know, a log after a speaker, I mean, Jonathan Wafer, even I didn't plan to speak and I'm drunk, I'm a bus girl. You don't applaud because you're trying to get moved along. The fact that this is so hot and my blood pressure is rising because of the heat in here, this building is not sufficient for a meeting. I can't come to meetings like this, I have blood pressure problems, I have COVID. This is not sufficient for our, our town.
Please let her finish.
I'm sorry, but the other thing was I suggest they have a secretary, maybe I'll come do it with a bell for five minutes, and he knows. I can hear the whole story and blah, 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 and I do appreciate what you all are doing, and I don't know nothing about it all to say, but I have worked on grants, and you work on grants, it's a process. You don't know you're getting the grant till you get the grant, and you have to fail on like your building, believing you're gonna get the grant, that's the only way where it's work. Like, and you, and you should do respectfully, I like that.
So what happens, what happens if they don't get the grants? Now our taxes go off.
Order, order.
Stop.
Oh, yeah, and, and really, like, when they yell at you, you shouldn't answer, because they don't have the power, that's just crazy. But in reality, if they don't get the, like, I wanted to fix these things too, I'm retired. I, I can only make, have so much money and pay our bills and stuff. But I also know there's progress that's to make, you can't stand still. It's, I'm always wishing it was like it was, but it's never gonna be like it was, and it's logic. And we, but I know the books and all, like, have not many managers in that kind of a position. It's, they thought of you trying to figure out what, what needs to be done that was never done, or what papers should have been filed that were never filed. I've been in those positions, like, immigrant working, that's all I'm about to say, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah, John?
I just have one comment, uh, Mr. Lawrence probably brought up, because more than people here, uh, in the township. Why don't you, uh, put this on the ballot and recall, and let's see what the president is what?
All right, we're gonna, listen, we've listened to everything you've had to say, we're gonna take a short break, executive session, we'll be back in to go through the rest of the agenda.
Actually, I'm very, before we do so, the gentleman prior to her made a statement. The statement was, we don't understand. I find that very offensive, there's a lot of people in here that are considered intelligent. There's a lot of people here trying to expose, and they made some very good points. We are not, I assume you may be, a venue. What we are questioning is the plan itself does not seem to be well thought out.
I understand, and, and Mr. Mike, I was...
I'm giving the exact instructions that you're talking about, you should be back here on either side of the table.
So we're not, we're in two all three of us.